Order. Okay.
Thank you.
At least we all know that. So watch what you say. So I'll call to order the May 12th meeting of the Swansea Planning Board here at Whitcomb Hall. And I'll begin with the roll call. This is Scott Self here. Michael York. Jane Johnson. Michael Day. Brandon Self.
Here.
Richard Lane.
Here.
And Bill Hutwelker.
Here.
And alternate Steve Malone.
Here.
Alternate Lily Gallagher. So I'm going to sit Steve for Michael Day. And the agenda this evening. Under applications and public hearings, we have. Planning Board number 22009. It's a multi-tenant application. Sarah Bergeron, owner of Turning Leaf Consignment, requests to operate a furniture and home decor consignment shop at 140 Old Homestead Highway. Subject property is shown at Tax Map 18, Lot 69, and is located in the Business District. And under discussions and other business, we have Christopher and Ann Hamilton. They want to. Build a house on a Class 6 road, and that's a recommendation that the planning board can or cannot make. We'll have to see. Planning Board number 21-007 is Avenue Development Site Plan Modification Request: Changes to the Roof Line. We have Site Plan Review Regulations to Discuss, Master Plan Timeline for the Completion, which will be a public hearing for the master plan. And any other businesses may be required. So first of all, I'll need a regional impact. That means anything on the agenda tonight.
So who there is none?
Okay, no regional impact, and that means that we just don't have to surround, notify surrounding towns because it doesn't affect them. So a motion by Michael York that there is no, nothing on tonight's agenda that requires a regional impact.
Seconded.
Seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, and now the minutes. We need to review and approve the minutes of April 28th, 2022. Anybody have any questions about the minutes or? If not, then a motion to. Approve them or accept them as presented would be in order. A motion from Jane Johnson to accept the minutes as presented is our second. I was thinking about Michael York. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And the minutes are passed. Brings us to our first application, and that is a public hearing, and it's a multi-tenant application. Sarah Bergeron, owner of Turning Leaf Consignment, requests to operate a furniture and home decor consignment shop at 140 Old Homestead Highway. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 18, Lot 69, and is located in the Business District. And I will open the public hearing. And is anyone, is she here?
Yes.
We are. Oh, all right. And. You can make a presentation if you wish. We have your application here. As I get to it. And. It looks pretty straightforward. They are. It's going to be a consignment furniture and home decor shop. There are other shops similar to that, I think, in that little area there. And let's see, they have been in business for seven years at 216 Marvo Street in Keene. And they're going to use units number three and four. They aren't modifying, as I don't see it here, but they aren't modifying the inside of the business, I mean, building, is that correct?
Just removing a wall that was.
Between those two units, yeah.
But it's going to go with one spot.
Okay. And so your hours are 10 to 5 daily. And that is seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay. And I see. Two part-time employees, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And estimated customers per day, they have 35, and they've got five planned parking spaces. And they'll be having deliveries. Once a day, a couple times a day, or something like that?
Yeah, picking up furniture, delivering.
Not every day then. Not every day?
Probably every day somebody's.
Oh, every day, okay.
Somebody has somebody's name.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Could you give us your name, please? Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Roger, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Yeah, sorry.
And they don't need any special licenses or permits, other than an approval from a planning board. And let's see, that pretty much, pretty much lays it out. Any questions from the board? Unless it is pretty straightforward. And is there any questions from the public? Are there any butters here? To speak on this? If not, hearing none, nobody online on this? No? Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate.
Motion to approve.
Pardon me?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, presenting. By Bill Hutwelker. Is there a second, seconded by Michael York. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And good luck to you. You have your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll have to be inspected by code enforcement and fire department?
Yes.
That's always given.
One, sorry.
Yep. Okay. Good. Okay, now, under discussions and other business, Christopher and Ann Hamilton. And it has to do with a building of property on a Class 6 road, a recommendation or not recommendation from the planning board. We had tabled it from our April 28th meeting because the zoning board of adjustment had voted on it, but they had erred in their voting, so they have to do it again. Have to rehear it again, and that's going to be at their next meeting. So the planning board can either table it to their next meeting, or I would say they can go ahead and discuss it and decide if they're going to recommend that or not recommend it. And let the plan, and let the ZBA do what they do, and then eventually goes to the selectman's office for a final approval. So let's say, do you want to discuss it? Do you know what it's about? First of all, yes, everybody knows.
Yeah, I went up there the other day just to check it out, and I believe they want to go 300 feet up that road.
Yeah.
It's basically a cow pasture right now.
Now, they had said that they were going to maintain that part of the road.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
And that would, of course, would have to be part of any type of agreement with the selectmen that they would maintain that part of the road.
Yeah, and I've been watching, the ZBA is saying that they want to give a special, may give a special exemption under the footage. Or as we have a 225 feet in that area. If I remember right, they have no footage on it.
No, that's the whole purpose of it.
Yeah, and I don't understand how you can totally disregard zoning ordinance. I could understand if they needed 4 or 5 feet. But when you have no feet, and the town does not allow building on a Class 6 road at all.
Well, that's what the variance is for. That's what they're going to the ZBA, because the ZBA grants variances because one size, again, does not fit all. If there are other circumstances the ZBA sees fit that they can build up there, then that's fine.
But I, that's what I see as a barrier right now.
That they don't have anything out. They would have to get a variance for that certain requirement. Bill, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I didn't realize you were going to get into a discussion about it, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, yes, yeah, you're gonna, he builds a selectman, and he's going to be voting on this, on the selectman's office, okay.
Yeah, you also explain why you tabled it, so.
Well, it's.
So it's gone beyond.
It's up to the board. If we want to discuss it, fine, the board can discuss it. It looks like we will.
Sure I had, so maybe that should be. We have to wait for the zoning board, of course.
Okay.
I think going back.
Just a second, I'm going to see Lily, I'm going to see Lily. Oh, no, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't do that. I can't see somebody for the selectman representative. Go ahead.
Thinking back to a situation that involved our property, you know, adjoining property where. Also was asking for the planning board to act in advance of the zoning board. And the planning board at that time said, we cannot do that. The zoning board has to act first.
That's because it was a vote that the planning board had to do, correct? It was a procedure that the planning board had to vote on something, yea or nay? And then, because you can't vote on something that has.
Was not approved.
Yeah, they wanted a special exception or a variance, one or the other? Okay, so yeah, the planning board could not vote on something that didn't exist like that. But in this case, the planning board has nothing to do with residential properties, other than they're asking the planning board to make a recommendation, whether they think that it should be allowed up there or not. But it's not a vote. The planning board can't stop it or promote it, you know, I mean, or approve it. It's just a, it's a vote for. Yea or nay, you know, if the planning board thinks it.
Yeah, so we just basically need to table it.
Well, we're going to have the same discussion after the ZBA, is correct? So want to discuss it now?
But, you know, we're going to know what they have done at that point where they've gone and tried to give a special exemption or not, so.
It'll be a variance, no special exception on that.
It'd be a variance.
I will go with. Take the matter until you have some of the zoning ones telling you what they think. So we know what we're reporting on the conditions that they may put on or something like that before we give them, before we get it made.
Well, again, it's not an approval. The planning board cannot give an approval.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
We're just giving an opinion.
Thank you, yeah.
As to what it should be, you know, it's just, just an opinion on it. So if we have a vote on it, whenever it happens to be, we'll just be voting our opinion as to whether it should be allowed or should not be allowed.
I still feel about the recommendations of the conditions, should the zoning board approve it?
I think the planning board can make up their own line, you know, the planning board doesn't need the ZBA to decide. That's my personal opinion, but I think we can make up our own line on whether we think it should be allowed up there or not.
We can disagree with what our opinion.
Of course.
Or agrees, whichever way you want to go. Then it's going to be, eventually it's going to be up to the select.
Well, that's right. It was the select right after that. They just hear from the two boards as to whether they think it should be done or not. Oh, and we have.
This is really the, the consideration from the planning board, how it fits with the master plan. That's why it's centered from everybody else. I guess you guys saw the whole master plan.
Yeah.
So you've got an area of town, and you're looking at that, you know, it's just fit, fit the master plan, it's a deep mineral, apron, you know, all that good stuff. I mean, that's, that's how I view it from, you know, 6,000 feet, you do want.
Okay, yeah, it would, the planning board does take the master plan into consideration when, when deciding specifically zoning issues, you know, when we're trying to zone it and stuff.
Our differences, we see just why it can be, why it might be able to be contemplated, kind of, for lack of a better word than that.
Could look at it both ways, yeah. The master plan could say it's premature development up that way because there's no road up there that would go and, you know, coincide with the master plan. You could also say it would coincide with the master plan by the master plan saying, we need more places to build houses. It can go either way with the master plan.
Right, I was looking to get a source, that's all.
Yeah. Jane, you're going to say something?
Has anyone, would this be the first one to build on a Class 6 road with variance? I didn't research it.
I don't think so. I remember.
But before or after passing of the ordinance?
Well, in any case.
That makes a big difference.
Quite a bit.
What ordinance are you talking about?
The, the one that they're using for trying to get a special, uh, variance in there.
Oh, you're talking about way back, because that's been around for quite a while, that you can't develop.
Right, what I'm saying is, we've had, we've asked the ordinance on the footage, which is what the zoning board is considering. So if you're saying, well, there's a precedence there, first of all, precedents don't always count, it just depends. Two, did that actually happen before that ordinance was passed, or after the ordinance was passed? If there was an incident, that immediately had a variance.
It could. Let's see, we, I recall we, we passed. It was not necessarily a residence, it was a camp up on this side of the road, on the other side of Route 10. That, it was years back, but the ordinance was still in effect.
Yeah, this one is actually, we just did, was 2008.
So which one is that? Now, is that for frontage you're talking about?
Yeah.
Because there are two issues here then. There is one for frontage and one that you can't build on a, less than a Class, or more than Class 6, whichever the, you know, the number goes on, the other way.
Which property are we talking about, just for the record? Which property are we talking about?
This one now?
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's for, it's the one that is proposing to build upon Talbot Hill Road.
Be section 4A3, I believe it is.
Read it.
Okay. Senator Resident, uh, the. Rural and Agricultural Districts, I believe, is probably falls into. I'm trying to hear again.
Because even if the requirement's one foot, they still don't meet it.
It's 225. Is the requirement.
So are you saying they aren't going to end up with that much?
They don't have any at all, I don't believe.
On a Class 6 road or better?
On a Class 5. Class 6 road, because this has to be on a Class, a town-maintained road, which means.
Town-maintained, yeah.
Or more. That's what it's at. Can't find it off the back of my head.
Well, you look for it. Anybody else have some comments?
I was just going to say, we can't, how do we make a decision on something that hasn't been determined?
Because they're just asking our opinion though.
Yeah.
Then we're making it non-informed, just opinions, which is not correct.
How can the ZBA inform us more? We have the applicants right here. I'm just asking.
No, but once they've made their decision, then we are now informed as to what.
What we should do.
What we should do. How do we, how can we vote on something that hasn't been determined?
Again.
Or offer an opinion on something?
Because it's just an opinion, you know, opinion doesn't have anything to do, really, with what another board thinks or another person thinks or whatever. It's, it's our opinion, and it's a consensus of the board, what they think. Do they think that development should be allowed up there, or do they think that it shouldn't be allowed up there? You know, it's just an opinion, regardless of, if the ZBA says, well, they meet four of the five criteria, like they did last time, but not all five. You know, those are. Those are the specific criteria that they go by, and that's it, that's all they go by, you know. In every decision they make, you know, when we read it, we see the criteria they go by, and then there, there are discussions on that.
Anyway, Scott, it's section 4A, Rural and Agricultural District. And three, all lots should be of at least three acres in size with a 225-foot frontage on a town or state-maintained road. The front setback is 30 feet from the front, probably lined at 20 feet from the side, rear park lines, amended March 11, 2008.
And this road we're talking about is a Class 6 road.
It's a Class 6 road.
Still owned by the town.
Owned by the town.
Still owned by the town, but it's a Class 6 road.
But not maintained.
So how much frontage are you going to have on that Class 6 road, if you did it?
About 1,000 feet.
A thousand, your property would go 1,000 feet on that road? And you're talking about putting the house lot, or the house, I guess, 300 feet up that road?
That's where the driveway would come off itself.
That would be right there, okay. So. Again, the ZBA would go, and maybe they'd make two decisions on it, I don't know, but one variance would be for the, the frontage. No, it wouldn't be for the frontage, because they've got 1,000 feet. It would be just for developing on a Class 6 road.
Yeah, see, their last, and I would hope they did, um, kind of. Well, we don't have to get into that, but what they did.
Again?
Well, what they did was, they have five questions, like built in, and this and that. They have five conditions they have to vote on, and if they don't know any one.
Yeah.
Then it's, I'll go. So what they did was, they voted no on this frontage thing. And they voted no because it did meet the spirit of the ordinance. Which is one of their questions.
Yeah.
Then they proceeded to approve the application, which, under their own practices, they shouldn't have. So that's why it's got thrown back at them. Now they have to go back and study and see that question and what they're going to do with it.
So it could go either way, as we know, the board can go either way.
It was three to vote, so.
Yeah.
They got, the two people that are qualified.
Well, anybody else? Comments? Jane, you have some comments on it? Nope?
I don't feel like I know enough about that area to give an opinion. I, I did see a mention from the Conservation Commission. And I, I don't know, will, will your road be visible from East Shore Road?
Do you mean the road or the driveway?
I can't see you because of the curtains, I'm still behind you. It's just. But that's good, thank you very much. That's good. Now I can see.
All right, so what, you were asking hard road, or do you mean the driveway would be visible?
Will, will you be visible from East Shore Road at Swansea Lake? There was some mention of it. I think they were probably concerned about driveways and roads that drain onto East Shore Road, but I don't know. It was after our meeting, I was not in a conversation with anybody about it, and I've never been over to that area, so. I don't feel like it could offer a valuable opinion, one way or the other.
The driveway would be off Talbot Hill Road, correct? And Talbot Hill Road comes off of East Shore.
Up at the top, yeah.
Yeah, Talbot Hill goes up like that, and their driveway would be off of that right there, so.
Okay, but Talbot Hill doesn't go clear through to East Shore Road.
It does, it does. That's how you get up there.
Yeah, but you're not going to go, I'm not going to go drive my car through there.
No, you're not, the decision won't make.
No, that's right. That's what I'm saying, it's a Class 6.
And it's, it's a town.
If you want to, if you want to go, Jane, I'll saddle up handy.
I, I don't think I care to, it's about the season, and I don't know. But that's why I'm not going to offer an opinion, yes or no, on what we should do about this until. I, I would like to hear from the zoning board, I guess, because then I would have heard more, I would know more about.
Okay, now, while I have the applicants here, though, do you want to know more from them? This is our chance to get more information from them.
Well, okay, if you have, if you, your house is going to be how many feet from Talbot Hill?
I think.
How many?
The driveway is going to start 300 feet up from East Shore Road.
From, from East Shore Road, okay. But you're going to go in from Talbot Hill, so are you halfway down the road or?
We're coming from East Shore Road.
What? Oh, great.
And you're also planning on maintaining that part of the road, and saw that this 300 feet of the road, maintaining that?
Yes, yes, yes. East Shore.
Okay.
Approximately 300.
Now, you guys also understand, if you're approved all the way through, if you fix that road, then everybody still has a right to use that road.
Right.
It's still a couple's way, even though it's a Class 6.
Right. We have to say that we're responsible on the town for the 300 feet of driveway or not.
Okay.
That's that, the 300 feet, yes, we have to stand up.
So when you purchase a lot, you did realize that you couldn't build a house on it unless you got a variance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, you know it's going, you know it's going in.
Yeah, pan around, it's interesting. You're brave.
Oh, yeah, no, ask the questions.
That's me behind our main building, I'm a questioner.
I guess it's because of the, the road itself, it's a, they need, yeah, it's not maintained by the town, and need to be able to get emergency vehicles up it, and so on and so forth, maybe. But they've said that they're going to maintain the road themselves, so vehicles can get up there. And they're. Well, yeah, I mean, it sounds to me like they have to do some work to the road, or to get up there.
There's quite a bit of work, there's quite a bit of work.
But again, that won't be done by the town. They will foot the bill for that, isn't that correct, what we're saying?
When you say that they're going to maintain the road, is that they're going to maintain dirt road, or are they going to paint it and maintain it painted?
My guess would be dirt, but let them answer that.
Dirt road.
You're going to see to it that that's. So, 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 like that?
So if you want, I'll get ready in just a second.
Yeah, but I just want to.
Well, you know what?
The road, the road would have to be brought up to town specs. You're aware of that too, correct? Yeah.
We're, we're still trying to find out what the town specs are.
Okay, that, that shouldn't be too hard to do. I had a question from, I don't know which of you guys asked first, Bill?
That's always just going to say Joe Gruce, make that determination.
Yeah. Yeah.
Joe Gruce has made that determination, so I have to bring it up to, uh, classified DOD specifications, which James is going to share with you. So it's.
Okay.
It's, it's been discussed. A lot.
All right.
With the product, individuals, all right.
Okay.
I would be. I would be really uncomfortable with myself to have to maintain a road there in the wintertime, but that's your choice, that's your problem, not mine. And. As someone who grew up half a mile from a gravel country road on a country lane, where we had bad winters and went in and out on a tractor. I can't criticize what you're doing. That's up to you, and it should be beautiful if you get to do it. But I, I'd be anxious to see your site plan and your, your plan.
We aren't going to see that.
No.
The residential.
Yeah.
Development, but, but we can ask them about it now, this is our chance to ask them about it now.
Well, he told me where it's going to sit, and he's quite a ways back from the boundary, and he's going to have a lot of road to maintain.
Mm-hmm, and.
Yeah, living, me living on a Class 5 dirt road. The town spends a lot of time and money trying to keep it up to grade, and it's going to be very expensive just to maintain, just so you know.
Pretty good, yeah. Okay, I guess they've done a little research on that, but.
Good.
They'll, they'll be talking.
A concern, mine would be emergency services too.
Well, if it's brought up to the town specs, kind of, town specs, you know, it has to be brought up to town specs, so.
Right, because we had other people in here worried about that.
Yeah, we did, yeah. I would say that. Uh, I think Mike was.
When one side, when one of those on a Class 6 road, one has to sign away, basically, their right to emergency services. They have to sign recognition, they might not make it that.
Okay, all right. And are you aware of that?
Yes.
And what was your question you were going to have?
I just wanted to comment on the other Class 6 road buildings in town. We know of two on Sycamore that got variances, with zero frontage. Uh, one on Oliver Hill, and another one Talbot, but that one had a little bit of frontage.
But not 200.
And not 225.
Okay, so there've been a few in somewhat recent times.
One in the same room. 1,000 feet away.
It's literally like, are what could be potentially our law, one law in between, and then the next law, then the variance, so.
Part of it's the Prescott something.
Oh, yeah, I know that one.
It's the John Class.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that one, okay. Well, I'm kind of with Jane, that, yeah, they want to take that responsibility to build up there, and, and they want to take the responsibility to the road. Then we, we shouldn't have a problem with it, you know, we're always saying that, that we don't have enough housing for people in town, or. Places for people to live or people to build, and then every time you turn around, we're putting more land in their conservation easements where nobody can build on it anyway. So what do you expect people to do? You know, they're going to have to go up in these areas and build. So I wouldn't have an objection to it.
It's a challenge for me, yeah.
Yes.
Do we have a, is there a motion on the floor yet?
No motion, no motion, no motion.
I would like to move it, just be tabled pending a decision from the zoning board.
Okay, we have a motion that this matter be tabled until the zoning board reaches a decision on it. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And then it'll be tabled. It'll be tabled until after the ZBA makes a decision, and then we'll discuss it again. You're welcome to come. Right now, we have. Under discussions and other business, we have Planning Board number 21-007. The Avenue Development Site Plan Modification Request: A Changes to the Roof, Changes to the Roof Line. So. They're submitting, we all have a copy of the letter that, that we've been given here, and they are. See, the request is made under 674-58 through 61. And I. It gets kind of confusing, but I'm saying that, or it looks to me that it can't be, a request cannot be made under 674-58 through 61. Because the letter. Uh, request, actually, let me read his letter here. He is saying, for the avoidance of doubt, so we know this, the request for modification is made pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 674-58 through 61. And then he goes on to say that this letter shall serve as our written statement of intent pursuant to RSA 674-60. And so RSA 674-60 does say that they have to submit. That they have to submit a letter of intent with their application. And they submitted their application last April, April 2021. So the RSA specifically says that if they want to go under that specific RSA, again, it has to be submitted with the application. Now, they've given us an email, which they mentioned our proposal is workforce housing, opposed to market rate units. And that, that we knew it was workforce housing, but the, the RSA is clear in saying that. That under this subdivision, I'm quoting from RSA 674-60, says, under this subdivision, they shall file a written statement of such intent as part of the application. And the intent is to file under 674-58. So. The planning board doesn't have the authority to waive any regulation with any of the RSAs at all. If the RSA says it has to be submitted with the application, it has to be submitted with the application. The planning board can't say, well, you know, we'll let you turn it in a year later, and then deal with it then. So. I would have to say, and we'll hear from the board here, I would have to say that it can't be submitted under 674-58 through 61 because of that requirement. That it needs to, that letter of intent, and again. This letter says that, this letter, he's not referencing, referencing any other letter, he's saying that this letter shall serve as our written statement of intent pursuant to RSA 674-60. This letter is April 21st of this year, 2022. So you all have copies of it, you all have copies of the RSAs.
Yeah.
And. That is an issue that we need to resolve.
I read the same thing as you did, Scott.
Okay.
And I totally agree with what you're saying.
All right, so. We need a consensus before we move forward with the request. And the consensus would be that it can. And the consensus would be that it can, or can, or can't really, because the RSA don't allow us to do that. We can't modify the RSA. So, it looks to me the only way the planning board can move forward would be to say that it's not under RSA 67458 through 61. So, what, what does anybody else think?
Can read.
Yeah, take a look at it, or you've, you've read it.
Yeah, I've read through.
You've read it. And again, it's, you have a copy of the RSAs there, it's under 67460 is what's referenced as to when that letter of intent needs to be submitted. 67460 is what you should be reading. Now, the reason they have that requirement is because the RSA, I know you're still reading, but I'm just doing background stuff. Their reason that requirement is there is so that the planning board is aware that it's being submitted under 67458 because there are special provisions in that section of the RSAs that allows the planning board to take costs into consideration when deciding on workforce housing. Nowhere else in the RSAs is the planning board allowed to do so. They can't take costs into consideration, but this specific one they can. So that's why the requirement is that it's filed underneath that when the application is submitted, so that we know what we're looking at. It's gonna be a consensus, there is no motion because I don't think there's a motion, you can shoot down on this one, but it's because, just a second. It's because if the planning board decides to go ahead and hear under 67458, then that's in violation of the statutes and the statutes don't give the planning board to waive that requirement to do so. So, it can't really be a motion because if the motion went affirmative, you still can't do it because we're not allowed to do it. Is my point here, it'd have to be consensus that the board says, yes, it can be underneath that, which I don't think it can, or that it can't be. Mr. Franks, do you have a, a comment on, and that's on whether it can be filed under 67458?
Sure, no, that's why I included the, can you read 674? And I, you know, obviously talked to council about it. You just, yeah, let me, your essay. Any person who applies for a land use board for approval of a development that is intended to qualify.
What section are you reading from?
I'm sorry, section 67460.
Yeah.
By any person who applies to a land use board for approval of a development that is intended to qualify as workforce housing under this subdivision shall file a written statement of such intent as part of the application. So, I don't think that there's any, there should be no misunderstanding that this has always been presented as a workforce housing, you read back through the minutes, looked through any discussions that were had. It's always been a workforce housing, we talked about, talked about.
But you need to.
Econ qualifications, everything that was there, so, that said, I got one email, there's numerous emails, but.
Yeah, we have a copy of one of them.
Yeah, it says, yeah, so where this was written as workforce housing for any approval, so, I guess, you know.
But the, the RSA 67460 means that you have to, you have to reference 67458 through 61. You have to reference that, you just can't say it's just gonna be workforce housing and not reference this certain subdivision of the RSAs because the planning board won't know, or whatever, or won't know that you're filing under that specific statute. And that's why they say you have to reference it.
I didn't, I didn't read where it said that you needed to reference.
Well, that's what, that's what it means when they say, let's see, any person in development that is intended to qualify as workforce housing under this subdivision. And in, in order to do that, you have to reference that subdivision to make sure it's under that subdivision. And you didn't. Anytime during any of the meetings we had last year. And he's checking that out, so board members, what's the consensus? Let's say, are you in agreement that way, do you, you know, that it does meet that requirement or it doesn't?
It didn't file, so it doesn't make, make, doesn't meet the requirement, it didn't file.
No.
Quite simple. And with the void of jurisdiction, because it's not filed.
Yeah, repeat that please, I didn't.
With the void of jurisdiction, because the letter of intent is not filed.
Okay, yeah, so you're in consensus that they did not file under that because they didn't reference it.
Right.
You are, like the York is, Jane, what say you on that?
Well, I, I would agree with the rest of you. If it isn't filed, it isn't, wasn't filed.
Lily, you're not a voting member, but you can still.
I guess I don't understand what they, they didn't file.
What they didn't file was a letter of intent referencing this 67458 when they filed the application. Uh, you need a copy of that. And Richard? And Brandon?
Yeah.
So, we have a consensus of the board really that, that we can't hear it under 67458 through 61 because, busy talking, well, anyway, they'll continue, because the letter of intent was not submitted with the application back in April of 2021. So, Abby, you have anything else?
My understanding is that when you are in a planning board meeting, we do these, not just here, but everywhere. Qualify this by stating what type of housing this is gonna be. I went to Swansea, over by the airport. So this is gonna be senior housing, age restricted, affordable housing. It's all on record, and I came here, this is gonna be workforce housing. I referenced it in that, it says subdivision shall file a written statement of such intent. We read through that, it's very clear that I showed that this was a workforce housing in caps, in parentheses, and, and outline, so opposed to the market rate, it was an Asher LLC, so, I, I don't know, I guess, I guess what you're trying to say is that I needed to use the language 67460 in this letter that went to Matthew Bobler before any approvals were granted, is what I'm hearing from the board.
You did, yeah, because it stated in that, that 67460, that that letter of intent has to accompany the application and it has to reference this specific.
It doesn't, it doesn't say letter, it doesn't say letter present.
It doesn't.
Yeah, and it doesn't, the New Hampshire housing in the RSA are written differently. The RSA itself, does any person who applies for a land use board approval, and this takes precedent over that is intended to qualify as workforce housing under the subdivision shall file a written statement that this is a workforce housing development.
Under that subdivision. Otherwise, they wouldn't have put under subdivision if they didn't want you to reference it. You can put workforce housing on, on anything, we've had people come in before that had said it was workforce housing. We've had people from the public saying, well, what do you mean by workforce housing?
Well, if you go back to RSA 6, where's the, 658, talks about all the definitions of it. And, goes right there in 64.
We aren't, we aren't disputing, Mr. Franks, we aren't disputing the definition, we're just disputing the procedure that it wasn't, wasn't done as the section requires. And again, the planning board has no authority to waive any of those requirements. You know, if it wasn't submitted, the letter of intent was not submitted with the application and it wasn't because you state here that, that this letter shall serve as our written statement of intent pursuant to RSA 67460 and this letter here is dated April 21st, 2022.
As, as outlined in.
I just have a follow-up question.
You can. Would you identify yourself, please, just for our record keeping?
Yeah, my name is Angela Paye, I work with the NADHOP interfaith project. I'm sorry, Angela, what's her last name? Paye, P-A-P-E, and we hear a lot about affordable housing, it's very vital for our region. I'm curious that, say, say it were to just be a market rate project and he were to still do workforce housing, if it was just a market rate project that he happened to do affordable housing in, could it be voted? Or does it have to, like, could he?
It can move forward right now because he has his approval, we approved it, so it can move forward at any time. But, but what Mr. Franks is disputing is the cost of changes to the roof line and that the planning board can take into consideration under 67458 through 61, if it's filed under that, if it's not filed under that, then we can't. And that's why what we're doing here now, but you're in for a modification to the site plan. So, the board has a consensus that it wasn't filed under that, so we can't hear it under that. So, we can move on to the modifications, which, again, that brings up another point with the modification is that we can't really consider it a request as a modification because it's not a modification. You brought in the drawing that you originally submitted with the original plan, which is the flat roof. You know, that's the drawing for your modification. And the planning board has voted on and already decided that with a vote that the roof is gonna be one of the ones that we selected that your architect, one of the three that your architect brought in and the planning board selected that. So that was decided on as a decision and it was probably in the May 27th meeting of last year. So, a modification is like, when you change the dormers on there, there was a change in trim line and, and that changed something with the dormers, that was a modification, it was changed there. The other modification we approved was the transformer pad that had to be moved because the public service wanted it someplace else. That's a modification, that was a change, we changed it. But this doesn't constitute a change. This, this, and again, you're asking us in your letter, this says, our request is that the board reconsider's the pitched roof requirement. A reconsideration actually is an appeal. When a, when a board makes a decision and you want them to reconsider, you're actually appealing to that decision, whether it's our board or the ZVA at all. So, again, referring back to the statutes, the 67715 lays out the requirements of the applicant to file an appeal and in this case, it would have been to the Superior Court because it had nothing to do with zoning and they've got 30 days to file that appeal. And again, the planning board has no jurisdiction to waive any of those requirements. If the statute says 30 days, then the planning board can't say, okay, we waived 30 days and you have 60 days or a year, whatever. That's not the way it works, that we get all our authority from these state RSAs. So, we can't even hear it as a modification because it's not a modification, not a change, it's a request, again, to reconsider a decision that the board had already decided on, so again, it would be an appeal. And I know.
So we're splitting, so we're splitting hairs over whether or not this was properly noticed on May 27th or before, if that's what we're doing here.
I don't, I don't see it that way.
No, I see it that way. I see it that way. I think that, I think that this project is gonna bring a lot of great homes to the community. It's gonna help. What you're asking us to do was not done at Asher, was not done last, last month for the project right down the street from the one that I just got denied on. I have been, in my humble opinion, treated differently and that's why we're in a lawsuit now with the other site location. I don't wanna fight with anybody, I wanna build homes for people I need them. This has been a workforce housing development, it was referenced as workforce housing development and I think we're splitting hairs here, I think you have the authority right now to make this decision and to work with us to move forward. $900,000 folks, for families that aren't getting homes because of a pitched roof in a brand new facility in a community that needs housing. And you have the right, you have the authority to move forward now and to make those adjustments. Four families on the street.
Let me pull the board, we haven't heard from the board yet, let me pull the board, I, we understand your, your concern.
Well, I'm sorry to be frustrated, folks, you know, I'm trying to do really good work here, there's a lot of people out there that are suffering. We're struggling trying to make this deal happen for $1.7 million of the budget. Everybody's scrambling to try to pull us together so people have a place to live. And I understand everybody is very passionate about aesthetics, I get it. Talking about the difference between a pitched roof and people having a place to live. I get it. This is, this is a very serious issue we're all facing. And I'm just asking for everybody, maybe look inside here, this is a brand new facility. Cameras, state of the art, it's the nicest facility in the county.
We've heard, we heard it and we approved it, so, so let's see what the board has to say about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, getting back to, is it a modification or is it a, an appeal? And what we were talking about before was, his letter states, our request is that the board reconsider's the pitch roof requirement. They aren't saying that they wanted to change the trim line like they did with the dormers and they aren't saying that they wanna move the location of the transformer like they do with that. They're saying they want us to reconsider our decision. And again, that constitutes an appeal. And again, the planning board doesn't have the authority to go against RSA 67715 which lays out what that appeal is and how it works. So, let's hear from the board as a consensus, we aren't, don't have to vote on anything, we probably should have a motion maybe, but let's hear what you said, have to say, anybody have to say that.
Oh, I believe it's an appeal and, you know, we can call it splitting hairs or not, but the RSA is of the RSAs and we have to follow up. Because if we go the other way, sometime we get bit because we did something we shouldn't have done.
Yeah, could be.
So, it's a deal.
Jane, what do you say?
Well, I think that's too bad, but if it's written right there, I don't think you should not follow it either. And I understand what Mr. Franks is saying about providing homes and all that. My feeling would have been that I wasn't working with you, obviously, I, I don't work for you, but that, I, I just feel like that particular design of building on that particular piece of land is, is big for the lot that it's, that it's being put on, it's, it's big and ungainly looking and as we talked before in all of our meetings.
Jane, I, I mean.
There's not all that room, so I, I think it is an appeal.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, what do you think of it as an appeal? Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. Lily, you weren't here on any of those, any of the site plan, I don't think, for any of this regard there.
Seen a couple of these.
Okay, but you can have an opinion if you like, it's up to you.
If, if it stayed a flat roof, did like fake pitch roof?
Well, what we're doing, we're.
But without the application and our appeal?
It might be. But it's, yeah, a change would be, but this wouldn't be. Richard, just a moment, we'll get through it and then we'll get to you, I'll, I'll get to you, Richard.
I feel it's an appeal situation and I have trouble with their statements in the fact that when we presented the pitch roof to them, they accepted it at that point. That constitutes, you know, and if we're, if we're going to go tit for tat in his saying that, well, it's understood that this is workforce housing and this is what this is supposed to be. Well, he's making an assumption that we understood something that's not written. He accepted something that was written because Matthew sent them a letter within the 30-day period stating the conditions. So, anything that has to, anything that's going to be changed beyond our vote now has to go, in my opinion, has to go through an appeal.
I agree as well.
That it's an appeal.
Yeah.
Okay, and sir, what was your name for the record, please?
Tim Sampson.
Tim Sampson, man.
We submitted three, I believe, three options for.
You did, yep.
The original drawing was not a completely flat roof. Sections of it were vaulted up. What we're trying to get approved, because it's significantly cheaper, significantly faster, and a better product, is, is actually a flat, a low-slope roof with a consistent E-line, which is not what was originally submitted. So we're all talking about a flat roof. These were, these images were submitted with that paperwork, and this is not the original design of what everyone is referring to as a flat roof. It changes, it changes that trim detail, it changes the overall.
Well, yeah, we, we did let you do a modification on that trim detail. I think it was part of the trim line there. So it looks like it's a consensus of the Board, that it's an appeal, and especially since their request is that we reconsider the requirement. They aren't saying a specific modification like they did before. So I would say, then, that a motion for a consensus of the Board, that, that it's a, it's an appeal, and that the Board cannot hear an appeal, as stated in the statute, which is 677-15, would be the motion to make.
I would make that motion.
Okay, Michael York makes the motion that this is an appeal, and the appeals should follow the process of 677-15.
Correct.
Is there a second? Second by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Now, Mr. Franks, I know, I'm sorry, Mr. Franks, but I think the town has treated you fairly. You know, the, the 674 does allow, you know, they, they require us to allow workforce housing on the majority of the residential zone properties in town. And, and you got permission to put it on a nice prime piece of business property out there. You know, the town's working with you there. The Planning Board worked with you on the project. We, we do, I mean, reduced the parking. We granted you that reduction in parking. We gave you the two other modifications to it, which was the trim line and the transformer being moved. We approved the project, and we gave you a 12-month extension just to get your financing in order. And, you know, I know this is difficult and confusing, but I think the rest of the Board would agree with me that we wish you the best of luck in moving through with the process, and we know it's not your first time around. And we're confident that you will get your, your funding for it. So would you want to identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Tom Julius, J-U-L-P-Y-U-S. And along with my colleague Angela, I'm a member of the Menadoc Interfaith Project.
I'm sorry, would you say it again?
Menadoc Interfaith Project.
Interfaith, thank you.
And I just wanted to make a comment, that I'm glad to hear. So Menadoc Interfaith Project, just to let you all know, is it's a nonprofit coalition of faith congregations, churches, synagogues, and organizations and individuals. And we work to encourage, to make more good things happen in our region. And we hear that. I hear that from this Planning Board, with a recognition that there is a need for more housing. And that's something that we, as members of local faith congregations, are really stepping into and encouraging groups like Planning Boards, Select Boards, to take actions that are going to expand housing options. And I hear you all doing that. And I just want to encourage you all to expedite this for Avon Drew as much as possible, because the housing situation just continues to get worse in this region. And encouraging projects like this is going to benefit all of us in the long run. And I hear the intention of that here, and I just want to encourage along this Board, and want to encourage you to, in addition to following the RSA's to the letter, which I completely understand the need for, to also open up the, broaden the options for developers like Avon Drew, who are going to make housing available in, in ways that none of the rest of us in the room could possibly do. So we just want to, we want to thank you for the efforts that you've done to pass, and encourage you to expedite those processes for developers.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I just want to remind you that we approved this project, and we gave him a 12-month extension. So I think he's going to get his financing.
Yes, I'd just like to respond to that for a moment. We don't have the authority to vary the RSA. And the RSA is very clear.
I think he knows that. He wasn't arguing that. I think he knows.
We're trying to work with him, but we don't have the authority to do it.
Yeah, under those things, but, but, you know, we're just-
Well, I think that when you look at the RSA, and as I was trying to, but I would do it all the way through it, when you look at it, the definition of workforce housing is completely spelled out. It is very clear. Workforce housing means housing which is intended for sale, which is affordable household, with income, goes through, talks about HUD, talks about workforce housing, more than 60% of median income, three-person household, less than 30% of their income. It's all defined. So workforce housing is very defined right here in the state statute. So when you look at the letter that I wrote to Matthew Bockler and warned that this was workforce housing, it's all right there. The definitions are very clear. You can't dispute the word workforce housing in caps and bold, that is italicized. Well, this is very clear, from my perspective, and from Council's perspective, that we clearly delineated that this was workforce housing. We change it, financing the whole nine yards. So it's all spelled out from RSA 674-58 through 61, it's right there. So I clearly identified this prior to any approvals, that this was workforce housing as defined by the NH RSA 674-58.
Okay, thank you. We've moved beyond that, though. We've, we've moved beyond the entire thing there. Okay.
So that's it.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, other than wishing you the best of luck, you know, with your project. I think you get your financing.
But we have other means, other means, avenues, other remedies. So we'll explore those, and we'll talk to Council and you forward the word.
Okay. Thank you. Next item up, Site Plan Review Regulations. Anybody been leafing through our regulations at all to see what we can change, or what we might be changing, or tweaking, or fixing? I haven't done any of that in the past couple of weeks, but I've been reading this stuff here, and that. But we should, we should keep it as an open, you know, agenda item for practically every meeting, just in case, you know, something might come up at the meeting that we might, site plan regs might want to be changed because of such and such, or whatever. So we should keep it open like that, do it every time, or someone has a question about our regulations.
There's two reasons we can look at.
Well, we can, yeah, anytime, just if it's open. So nobody really has anything on that, I guess. The next item is the Master Plan Timeline for Completion. Now, we probably haven't heard from the Conservation Commission, probably on their stuff. So what we need to do is just set a date for a public hearing to, that the Planning Board officially accepts the, not modification, that we accept the Master Plan Update that we did a while ago. And we can always talk to the Conservation Commission afterwards, and it doesn't, we don't have to wait five years to update that document. We can update it next year if we want, or anytime we want to update, we can do it. So if Conservation Commission comes later on, they haven't had time to do it, fine, that's good. But we should move it along, get a public hearing, and, and do it. So maybe that our next meeting, if we have time.
If we have anything to say, this is kind of late, so probably be a good time.
On the next meeting? Okay.
You want to set the public hearing?
Yes. The rest of the Board members do, I'm assuming, yeah. Okay.
Is this one, we did the, in the master plan, we did the, we did the zoning, we did 10, 12.
Oh, the corridors, you mean?
Yeah, we're going to be doing 32.
Let's see, was that part, that wasn't part of it in there? That, that mentions 32 in, in part of the background part of this stuff. It mentions the sites and stuff over there. But I don't know if it specifically states what should be done over there. But we can do any section that we want, really, updating Master Plan, keeping it updated. And it might be better if we did it quicker than every five years.
It'd be better if we get the first meeting in June, so there's time to get proper notice.
Okay, let's do that, then. Yeah, that's right. We have the constraints of the RSA's. We're going to do it on our, is it June? Do you know the day? Our first meeting in June-
We're going to do one.
Have a public hearing-
On?
On the update for the Master Plan.
And by that time-
That would be the night.
Well, they might, and they may be, and, you know, during the public hearing, you may be there, but we can still approve the public, I mean, approve the, the document, and still take in their information. So, is there any other business that needs to be conducted in front of the Board? If not, nothing from Mike here. Sometimes he has the peanut butter over there. Okay, if not, then a motion for adjournment has been ordered. Okay, we have a motion for adjournment. We've all made that motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Brandon. Any further discussion? All those in the paper indicate by saying aye. All opposed, and we're officially adjourned.